I'd like to call this September 14th, 2023 Board of Education Work Session to order. George, can you take the role?
Ms. Bisel?
Here.
Ms. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Thatch?
Here.
Ms. Howson?
Here.
All present.
We authorize for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our district's goals remain the same: financial prudence, academic achievement, growth, and community engagement. As a board, we strive to measure all of our decisions against these three goals. Next on the agenda is public comment. We do have one slip for public comment. Ken Evans. Ken, if you could approach the podium and state your address. You have approximately three minutes.
Madam President, my name is Ken Evans. I live at 18399 Yorktown Oval, Strongsville, Ohio. I've been a part of the Strongsville schools as a citizen for a few years. Walter Ernfeld, way back when, asked me to get involved in the schools because he felt schools were the bedrock of a community. And I believed in that, and so I've been involved in various capacities as a citizen, helping with the schools over the course of many years. My wife and I moved here 46 years ago. That's been a long time that we've been residents of Strongsville, but I'm one of the new people compared to some people who've lived in Strongsville for a lot longer. We're very fortunate in that we had two kids who went through the Strongsville schools and graduated, and that outstanding education helped them to go on to be an architect and a doctor of physical therapy. So we firsthand understand how important schools are to families that have young kids that are going through the schools. I'm here tonight because we have a renewal levy that will be on the ballot this November. There is a Citizens Committee that is hard at work on making sure that there will be a great deal of information that goes out about that. But I wanted to come up tonight just to talk about the fact that that Citizens Committee will look a lot different this year because the state of Ohio, the Secretary of State, has changed some of the definitions of how we run campaigns for school levies in the state of Ohio. Our administrators and a lot of our people who are involved in the schools will be absent. And many of us have come to count on them as being a part of any levy campaign in getting information out and sharing their passion for education. The Secretary of State has decided that their job is a 24/7 job, and therefore they cannot participate in any election activities or any information or any piece of that election. So the Citizens Committee, which is called Continue the Excellence, will be working on that and making sure that all of our citizens are aware of the need for the renewal of the levy. It is a renewal. It's not doing anything different than what we already have in place. But at this point, one of the things is that there is always information that is out there. Our schools are very fortunate in that our district treasurer has received outstanding ratings from the state treasurer year in and year out. Our teachers and administrators are not among the highest paid in the city of Cleveland. They are well down in the middle, and so we spend our money very wisely and making sure that we get value for the dollar. And those people that are involved in Citizen Committees, that are part of the school district and help the school district, also are very aware and acutely aware that we do spend our money very frugally and make sure that it goes as far as it can. But I know that when we talk about renewals, oftentimes people may say that it's not necessary because that was something that we needed before. But now the schools have a real high bankroll that they're sitting on. And I want to make sure that I say that Cuyahoga County, the county library system, Tri-C, and many other organizations that are community organizations have to run with a high balance in their account. And so I don't want anybody to think that the school district is sitting on a bankroll or anything like that. These are very necessary funds to keep this education going. As I said, my two kids have graduated. They're gone. They're now living as young adults in the community. I want to make sure that those kids that are coming up through the schools have the same opportunities as they did. So I would encourage you to make sure that you look at information very carefully. Don't just read and accept what's online and somebody's opinion. Make sure that you get the facts to know that a renewal is very important to this community and to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report.
I don't have anything to add, Ms. Howson.
Great. Thank you. Next Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Howson. Before we go to the item in updating our master facilities plan, as Ken shared, we were blessed to have a wonderful community and a successful school district. And as you may know, the state report card was released today, and our district has received five-star rating. That's the highest rating you can get on the overall grade. Our buildings did extremely well. Five-star rating means we significantly exceed state expectations in terms of how we're performing on a variety of measures, whether it be achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation, and early literacy. And that's a credit to everybody: our supportive community and parents, our wonderful students, our staff and teachers and administration that have worked tirelessly to continue to build and grow. We haven't sat back on our laurels, but we've challenged ourselves to get better every year. And as the report card system has changed, I think it's something for our community and our staff to celebrate, that we achieved very well last year, and now this is the first year with the overall rating, and we've achieved as high as you possibly can get. So congratulations to everyone in the district and our community on a well-deserved achievement there. As we talk about continuing to grow into the future, I'd like to bring Abby and Chris up. They're going to join us here at the table to share with the board the work of the Elementary Facilities Planning Committee. We've been meeting over the last seven months, and they're going to provide an update as to the work that we've done and ultimately the recommendations that have come out of that group in terms of our master facility planning process. I've shared this a few times, but just as they're getting settled, although it's come from the Elementary Facilities Planning Committee, and the elementary facilities have been a central focal point of that work, we've taken a comprehensive look at all of our facilities and said, what do we need to address, take a look at over the next 20, 30, 20 to 30 years, so that will be a part of the plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Abby and Chris to begin to share their work with the board and the community.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us and allowing us to explain to you what we have gone through the past five or six months since we started this process.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. I realized I was blocking some people, so shuffling still. But yeah, so tonight, we really just wanted to do an overview of our process. I know that you know we've been going through this planning process for a while now, and as we kind of looked back on how long that process has been, we'll kind of summarize what we've completed, what we have left to do within this master planning process, and just kind of where things stand today. We do have a few detailed things that we just want to make sure you understand as it relates to should we move forward with the OFCC, so that's kind of at the tail end of this. While we do have quite a number of slides, it's our goal to move through them fairly swiftly, but we would love, if it's okay with you, for you to stop us and ask questions as we're going because we're trying to recap, you know, a year of work essentially. So with that, we will go to the first portion. So again, we're going to do a process overview, summary of our committee meetings, and then we'll get into some detailed conversation. So the process overview, I know you've seen probably various, you know, agendas, schedules, ways that we were kind of approaching our work with the committee. We tried to simplify it all onto one slide here. So on the left side of the screen is what's been completed, and then on the right side is what we've got upcoming. So we started this process doing site visits and assessment reports last summer, so summer of 2022. So we went on to each elementary facility, including this one, and we updated those OFCC assessment reports. And we have a slide in here that kind of goes into a little bit more detail about that, but that was critical to just understand kind of where are our physical facilities right now and what our next steps might be. So we took that information and those reports, and we presented them to the Facilities Planning Committee, so which is, you know, a committee of this group, and that was in September of 2022. And it was at that point that we realized we were going to undertake a pretty large planning process that was going to touch potentially all the elementary schools and some other facilities in our district. So the larger Elementary Facilities Planning Committee was formed just to involve more community voices in the process. So in the gray box, you'll see how we've kind of approached meeting with that group. We've had seven meetings. In addition to the work of that committee in the room during those meetings, we have a group of key communicators that offer feedback on the work of that committee. That's done, you know, Dr., I don't think I've ever called you that. Dr. Iba facilitates that as far as sends out summaries of the meeting and asks for feedback, and then we fold that into our process. We've also had core team meetings, so that's some board representation and members of the central admin staff, just to kind of move the process along as we're getting into more and more detailed conversation. That's another group that's meeting regularly. And then we've been meeting with some specific groups to talk about programming as well. So we're at a point now where we are going to have a community update meeting. That's going to be on the 19th, and that will be virtual. And then we'll be releasing a survey to the larger community that'll be open through the end of the month. The idea is that we can take that feedback from that survey and conduct our final facilities committee meeting the first week of October, and then that'll finalize the recommendation to this board of, here's our recommendation for our facilities plan. So that's kind of where we are in the planning process. And once we make that recommendation to you as a board, that'll be when our kind of master planning work is complete, and then at the very end of the presentation today, we can talk about should you want to accept that recommendation, what the next steps would be. So any questions about kind of the work of the last, you know, year or so? Okay. So next, we kind of are going to jump into a brief summary of each meeting, so you can just kind of see the pace and the content that was covered in those committee meetings.
So the first meeting we had back in late February, so about seven months ago, not quite, but getting there. And we started off high level, wanted to introduce the committee to some overall district information. This is just a district map showing your multiple school buildings, your five elementaries, pretty much one in each quadrant, and then Maraski kind of in the center. And then in the dark green and the light green circles are your other facilities. Again, a recap of your elementary schools, listing out their existing square footage and the size of each site. And we talked about the building assessment validations. They were initially done in 2008, but we did them again last summer, as Abby had mentioned. And something that we want to bring up is this two-thirds rule that the OFCC has. And that's where if the cost to renovate a building is determined to be more than two-thirds the cost of building, a comparable building new, then the OFCC recommends building new. So we went through the assessment summary for each building. And at Chapman, we could see that the renovation-to-replace ratio is over that two-thirds, between 69 to 73 percent. So the OFCC would recommend building new for that building. Kinsner came in in the low to mid-30s, so we would look at renovating that facility. Maraski came in at 60 percent overall, but we have to take a look at the fact that it has multiple additions to it. And the original 56, 57, and then 77 portions of the structure came in well over the two-thirds, but the 2005 addition, which is in really good condition, which is only 32 percent, brought that overall down to 60 percent. Then Sarar also went over the two-thirds limit, high 60s to low 70s. And Whitney was even higher in the high 70s to low 80s. We talked about the current enrollment and of how recently the district has lost students, but over the next 10 years, we are looking to start gaining them again. And the projected enrollment out to 2031 to 32, so nine years from now, you're looking at up to around 6,600 students. So the second planning committee took part a month later in late March. And here we talked about the building capacity versus enrollment. All of your elementary schools are over their capacity. You can see that the listed capacity is 1,922, and per last year's enrollment, you were at 2410. So about 500 students overall, more than what your listed capacity is.
It might also be helpful to just note that capacity generally means that every student would be in a classroom, and you would have some excess space within the building. So the reason you're able to fit more students in than your listed capacity is because you're probably using those special spaces and using all those other spaces. So it's not that it's over what would be acceptable from like a building code or anything like that. That's not what this means. This is what the ideal capacity for a school building, to do the things you need to do in a school building, would be. So I just want to clarify that a little bit.
And this is showing enrollment for your middle school and high school. And within that meeting, we broke down into two subcommittees. One that focused on elementary schools, looking at what are the successes of our schools? What are our challenges? Now, what is our vision for a Strongsville elementary school? And what elementary building concept master plan would support our vision? And the other committee looked at other needs outside of the elementary school, so other academic or arts spaces, athletics, performing arts, that kind of thing. What kind of partnerships would you like to explore in our new or our existing facilities? And then we came back together as one committee, and we started to discuss locations and sites for potential new facilities.
So our next meeting kind of continued on that work while we had conversations in meeting number two. In the third meeting, we actually just jumped right in and started looking at master plan options. So really, in that first meeting, with our data of the buildings all being over the two-thirds rule, we kind of came to the conclusion as a committee that there was going to be a recommendation for new buildings, right, except for Kinsner. So we kind of knew that. So we jumped in, and we had the elementary focus committee and then the other needs committee. So the elementary focus committee, we really just threw up a lot of different options on the screen of a one-building plan, a five-building plan, and everything in between. So that's what you're seeing here. And we talked about the size that those buildings would have to be if we went with any of those concepts, and we're just talking concept at this level. We weren't talking about sites. We weren't talking about anything else. And we were able to make a lot of really good decisions right during that first meeting. Again, I think there were, you know, again, that committee's, you know, staff members, parents, community members. And so if you go to the next slide, Chris. Right off the bat, we were able to kind of take the one-building solution off the table and, you know, the two-building solution off the table as well. So the other needs group really was able to focus in on a couple of subcategories of other needs. And other needs here means anything that's not an elementary school. So there was fieldhouse and stadium conversation that happened. There was conversation around performing arts. There was conversation around the administration building, this building, because this was an elementary school, right? And so we did assess this facility condition when we assessed the other elementary schools. And then we talked about the preschool as well. So that group, you know, came up with some needs that they kind of had observed or questions that they had about those other needs.
Abby, before you go on, you said you assessed this building as well.
Yeah.
This building was over the two-thirds rule as well, so the idea that this could be used in the plan was not feasible.
Correct. And this was one that was teetering on the edge of the student capacity here was 268 students. And another component that we've been talking about as we've been going through this process is the OFCC. And they won't generally co-fund a building under 350 students for a district your size. So those two things kind of paired together made us think, okay, we're not really talking about this building. Oh, you're doing that.
Yeah. So Planning Committee four in late May, we are now honing really into the elementary schools. And the focus of that was talking about neighborhood schools versus grade-banded schools. What are the pros and cons? What are the positives and the challenges of each school type? Your neighborhood school being you have multiple, say, PK5 schools throughout your district. Grade-banded is you have, say, a K to 1, a 2 to 3, a 4 to 5. You know, what we want to get a feel from the committee as to which way they want it to go. And these were some kind of questions that we wanted them to think about during their discussion.
So after that meeting, and some of the pre-work for that meeting included some articles about grade-banding, because you all were kind of very familiar with the community school model or the K5 school model. And so those were some of the things that we're going into and kind of supporting some of those conversations.
And then Committee meeting five in late June, we started to talk about a master, two master plan options for these elementary schools. One was what we called the orange option, which would be three buildings, which would include building two new elementary schools for 1,062 students apiece, and then renovating Kinsner. The other option, which we called the yellow option, was to build three new elementary schools at a little bit over 700 students each and renovating Kinsner. So option orange, we would look at costs of 82 to 90 million, but that would not include the renovation to Kinsner or any addition or new construction to Maraski. You would also have to add into that the abatement and demo of any existing buildings that were to come down, and then any additional LFI, which is locally funded initiative stuff. That is, say, the district wants a larger gym than what the OFCC standard is for. You can do that, but that additional square footage has cost assigned to it, and that cost would then have to be completely shouldered by the district. The OFCC or the state would not co-fund that difference. And an LFI can be whatever you want it to be. Some of the concerns over option orange, given the sites that we had, big schools for 1,062 students, and how do you shoehorn that into the sites that you have? So you may be looking at three stories, not ideal for youngsters. Plus, it takes a school out of one of your quadrants. We talked about how you guys have an elementary school in each quadrant. How important is that to keep it like that? So option yellow, again, that would be building three new elementary schools and renovating Kinsner. It's a bit more expensive than option orange because more smaller buildings are going to cost more than fewer larger buildings. There's efficiencies built in to the larger buildings that you lose when you go to more smaller buildings. So costs of 95 to 105 million, again, plus the renovation cost to Kinsner, any additions to Maraski, bait and demo, and any additional LFI. But with the option yellow, we have smaller buildings that can fit more comfortably on your existing sites. Probably don't need to go to three-story. And you can maintain a K5 in each of your quadrants.
Wouldn't there be one missing in the top right quadrant?
We would be looking at Whitney moving to Albion.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I saw Building 4, but I saw Whitney across that, so.
So Planning Meeting six in late July furthered option yellow. And we looked at what we call fit plans. And they are high-level conceptual or preliminary site plans that, they do just what their name implies, that they show what can potentially fit on a site. And we did a fit plan for each of the potential three new elementary schools. What we have shown here is the proposed building footprint in red, the proposed new parking area in gray. We have our existing building shown in the dashed red line, and then proposed playground area and a multipurpose field shown in green. So here at Sarar, we'd be looking at locating the new building to the west of the existing. This would be a swing site, which means that the new building would be constructed while the existing building stays occupied. Once the new construction is done, you move the students over to the new building. Then you can demolish the existing building. Typically, where the existing building used to be, that's where you put parking or you put green space. At Albion, you guys are swimming in space at that site, so no real issues there. We showed our building in the southern portion of the site, trying to keep it away from all the vegetation and the topography change that occurs in the northern half of the site. And you'd also be able to keep your existing multipurpose field in track in that southeast corner.
I think it's good that you asked the question about Whitney because, you know, we're talking about this site based on the site name, which was the previous Albion site. But the intent here is that we had a bigger and better site so close to our existing Whitney site. And when we analyzed that existing Whitney site, it was smaller than even some of the other sites and had some different challenges. So the committee was on board with kind of when we looked at those two things, that this seemed to make a lot of sense. And then again, there's that additional potential community and athletic use of the field. So this would really be what would be considered the Whitney replacement, the Whitney replacement building.
And then at Chapman, similar to Sarar, locating the new building to the west of the existing building and putting parking in the multipurpose field where the existing building is once it's demolished. Now, here at this site, we do have some topography to deal with, but we have looked a bit into that with our civil team, and it's something that can be accommodated.
So at each step of the way, kind of meeting number five and meeting number six, and at the end of each committee meeting, we do like an exit survey and get some feedback. And at each of these steps, we're really checking in on, you know, the committee conversation is leading us toward Plan Yellow. How do we feel about that? And we were kind of building consensus as we moved along. And at this point, we were already getting pretty significant consensus on this yellow plan as far as the elementary schools were concerned. And some of the questions that started coming up were about Kinsner and what would happen with Maraski. So we kind of tried to dive into that in our meeting number seven. We had been talking about it at the other meetings, but we, you know, kind of tried to really hone in on those discussions. So our team went and did an educational adequacy study at Kinsner, and that was a dedicated visit where we really just looked at the existing building. And some of the questions that we were trying to respond to were, okay, if I'm in the Kins, if my student's going to Kinsner and isn't going to be in a quadrant of the district that's going to receive a new facility, are they going to have access to the same type of educational environment as a new building? So Kinsner already is the new, the new one in the group, the new building in the group. So we went through and we analyzed the spaces for capacity and flexibility, daylighting, and safety and security. And so we're looking at like the size of the spaces in the building, the size of the classrooms, the layout of the classrooms, and we're comparing it every step of the way towards if we were going to build new. So Kinsner has a capacity of 500 students. So we ran a model and said, if we were going to build a new 500-square-foot elementary school, how big would the gym be? How big would the dining area be? How big would the music area be? You know, et cetera, et cetera. And everything was well within kind of what the recommendations would be, or in some cases, very near spot-on. So I think some of those planning principles, you know, whether it was through So I think some of those planning principles, you know, whether it was through OFCC or not, were obviously, you know, being used when this building was designed. So proper size and location of those things, main entrance well-located, visible from the parking lot, from a safety and security, you know, standpoint, you can kind of see around the building. Every regularly occupied classroom has windows and natural light. So as far as it relates to those types of things, it kind of helped us confirm that this was a really, really good candidate to renovate, that the bones and the spaces were the right size. And then we completed some studies at Maraski. We gained access to some different structural reports that have been done throughout the years from some of the original portions of the building. And this helped further confirm for us that the portion of the plan that you're seeing is the two thousand and five addition. So the red star is as if you're standing at the, the main entry to the new portion of the building to the gym. And so we're essentially saying that we're going to keep the gymnasium piece and the spaces around it because those were well under that two-thirds rule, if you remember. And we think this site is still a really good site and, and centrally located within the district. And when we move forward with these new elementary school buildings, we see this site as an opportunity to house and potentially even expand what you're able to offer for pre-K, which we know is, is something that generally is, you know, a good thing for you and for younger, you know, families coming in the district. And then it also provides a landing spot for the central office and the board functions. So the idea would be that we would keep this portion of the building and do some renovation of those classrooms and that this might be the side that we more repurpose for central admin and board functions. And the gymnasium will be an upgrade from this one, but the idea is you could use it in a similar fashion, where you could do community meetings, committee meetings, professional development potentially. And then also you would have another community asset in a gym space that would stay there since it's one of your nicer ones. We would then take the rest of the building and demo. And that way, we would get to lay out your early childhood or pre-K areas as, as new and they could be the ideal size and, uh, ideal adjacencies. So this would be like a demo portion, reno portion, and then build an addition. So that keeps a presence, you know, kind of in the center of the district, but the function would switch here to pre-K and board office in this, in this plan. And this idea actually came from one of the other needs committee groups. I know when they were talking through, we were looking at all those other needs and we had board office and pre-K on there. And one of the challenges was can we fit it into one of our existing elementary? So this, this shook out to be a good kind of fit for that. The cost page, so we were updating costs anytime we had new information as we were working through the process. And as we were doing that, we were coordinating with the OFCC because we are working through their planning processes as well. And so this is a summary page that was updated in Au- end of August. It'll be ready to be updated one more time because we do have some items there that are shown in pink that had to do with the, um, the budget for asbestos abatement in any of the buildings that are being demoed. So we now have that information. So high level, we've got new construction for three new elementary schools. We have the demo and abatement of Chapman, Whitney, Sarar, and this building here. We have renovations to Kinsner. And that would be everything that was in that building assessment that we did last summer, that was built off that OFCC assessment. So pretty significant upgrades as far as a building would be concerned as far as brand-new HVAC system, because we know there were some issues with HVAC and moisture in some areas of that building. So that would be taken care of with that scope and the whole, you know, host of, of renovations. So pretty, not, not just a coat of paint, right? Like, that's pretty significant there. And then the demo, reno, and addition to Maraski that we talked about. We do have a bit of a placeholder in there as well for the fact that there's going to be time between now and when you would potentially ask your voters for support of this. And inflation happens over that time. So we've got a little bit of a placeholder for that, too. So if you, we would consider this kind of the elementary side of the plan. And that's coming in at about a hundred and thirty-six point five million dollars. So that's for the elementary school scopes, taking care of your Board of Ed, taking care of your pre-K, and then taking existing buildings offline. Before I jump into other needs, because that's the other half of the costs we're going to discuss, I, I know that was kind of, again, we're trying to kind of give an overview, but is, are there any questions about just, this is kind of like the meat or the backbone of the plan costs? Any questions? Okay. So the other needs group really kicked back into high gear at this point. We were all hands on deck figuring out, again, the elementary school pieces of the plan as a committee. And then we talked through fieldhouse and stadium and what those things could look so, look like. So updates to the stadium at, there's, there was a comment about potentially some upgrades to the middle school, potentially some upgrades to the high school stadium. And then we talked about a fieldhouse being an important piece to supplement athletics, but also provide some community space as well. The idea is that we want to make sure that this is a holistic of the entire district's needs. The other bucket, I guess, outside of athletics would be performing arts. So we spent some time visiting and talking with the music, uh, the music director over at the high school and looking at the existing auditorium space, seeing what we could do from a rigging and lighting standpoint to kind of enhance that space for performances. And then potentially getting some of the backup house functions like dressing rooms, storage, you know, some of those features updated. So when we, we initially set out some budgets that could supplement those other needs spaces on the next slide, it totaled a potential of about seventeen million additional dollars when you look at some of those other needs. And that's kind of where we, in our very last meeting, set off into groups to talk about our other needs and how they fit into the rest of the plan and if we were capturing them correctly. Because, again, we're not, we haven't gone through a design process on any of these. We're just kind of gathering information of what the needs are and trying to establish budgets. So from there, we had some conversation. And then the last thing we did at that meeting was reminded everyone of the estimated millage calculation. And George, I don't know if you wanted to mention anything on this sheet as far as, you know, what, you know, what this information is or is not, or if you want me to summarize it, I can, too.
You can go ahead.
Okay. So, you know, we were really just looking at if we were to, to put this on the ballot and ask for support, what would the bond size be and what would that translate to for folks? So this is just a range of if the project was a hundred and twenty million dollars all the way up to if this project was a hundred and fifty million dollars. And it assumes different years to maturity, different potential interest rates. And then it's comparing that against the annual cost for a hundred thousand dollar value home. So on the higher end of the scale, on the hundred and fifty million dollar ask, you can see that for a hundred thousand dollar home, it was like a hundred and fifty-one dollars for a thirty-seven-year bond is what we would be asking. So it just kind of, for folks, let them understand what this would start translating to, to a taxpayer. So we wanted the, we, we reviewed this at a few meetings and we wanted the committee to be aware of that as we're, as we're, as we're putting this information out there. So we ended that conversation by asking, as we consider all factors of the district and community needs, you know, what are we recommending from the other needs list to be part of the project? And then we wanted to just get a soft feel of what did the committee feel with what they knew would be the maximum project cost that they would feel that they could recommend to you as a board? And we didn't have a lot of conversation around that last question, but we just kind of did a, a check-in with the groups. So I think everyone felt, you know, fairly strongly that a lot of the other needs, needs were really important. And we even started maybe expanding on when we're thinking about fieldhouse at the high school, do we need to also be maybe considering turfing some additional fields there to give you more flexibility and more community use as well? So we are in the process right now of continuing those conversations with those specific user groups to try to finalize those other needs costs. And the committee kind of landed at between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty-five million as the maximum that any of the groups felt that they would feel comfortable recommending to you as a board. And the idea there was that we would, you know, kind of share that information out. And then obviously, we're going to have our community input meeting and then we're going to have our final meeting to kind of look at what that cap is and where does that end up landing and then what scope fits within that cap, if that makes sense. So that is a summary of our work with the committee so far. And our next section kind of gets into next steps. So are there any questions about the process and the committee work?
I have a question. Um, for the middle school auditorium, since that's fairly new, what is the average amount of years you go before updating something like that?
So for that piece in particular...
When was the middle school open?
Um, ten years ago. So that was a, that was a relatively small dollar amount when you're looking at a hundred to forty billion dollars. The, the only piece that was recommended there was about fifty thousand dollars to upgrade some of the AV, I think it's a, it's a software thing so that it would be compatible with how the high school one functions and how some of the other spaces in the district function. So it was more about getting on the same page. It wasn't anything infrastructural or anything at all. Yeah. Another good question.
Could you speak to what some of the other districts around us have done as far as, you know, millage-wise? Because I feel like that resonated with me. I was part of the committee and you spoke to what some of the other, you know, what some of the asks have been in other communities.
From a total cost of bond issue, you mean? I mean, you're, you're right in the range of what a lot of other folks are putting out on the ballot now. Not necessarily a lot to point to that had success with that this last round, but we've had, it's been a tough, you know, last year or so with that. But a lot, a lot really staying above that hundred million dollar when they're looking at tackling a bigger component of their district than just one building. I can't really think of many that have been under that recently, under that hundred million. Can you, Chris?
Edison Local Schools, which is south of Sandusky. I think they, they had failed and they were, they were not quite a hundred million.
But I think it's important to note that that's a district that could have a K-12 school. So it's not, that's why it's kind of hard.
They were like fifteen hundred students.
Yeah. And, and another district that's still smaller, but maybe more comparable, like North Royalton did renovations to their high school and their new consolidated elementary school, which was fourteen hundred kids. And that was a ninety million dollar bond issue. And that was in two thousand sixteen, maybe? So, you know, I wouldn't say for your size of district and tackling a segment of your master plan like this, you know, it's par for the course for them to be over a hundred million, I feel, these days.
Because I feel like the group that I was a part of, we kept kind of going back to and comparing to the middle school.
Right.
And as, you know, time goes faster than we like to realize, we had to stop and say, well, that was ten years ago that we passed that bond.
Right.
And Chris, I think that's when you spoke up and said, you know, that we are not far out of the realm of what other districts are, are going to be asking for.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that we've seen a rise in costs. Generally, they were marching along at about three and a half percent a year in construction. A couple of years ago, we had just wild thirty-five percent jump in construction costs in one year. And then the year after that was almost six percent. Now it's kind of, last year it was three. So it's steadying back out, but we didn't jump back down from that. I think another scary thing to realize was when you built the high school stadium, I think I read in some articles that it was like two million dollars or something. And now, you know, a stadium of that scale would be twenty million dollars, you know? So there has been a pretty significant hike since some of the bigger initiatives that have happened in the district. And so, yeah, for what that's worth, I guess. Any other questions on that stuff, like committee work, I guess, so far? Okay. We have a next step slide. And we tried to organize it to show kind of school board meetings that are critical in green, including today, the first green session, community meeting in teal, the final committee meeting is in pink, and then there's some OFCC steps that would put, need to be taken as we move forward. And those are in yellow. And really, this month would, we would focus, again, September is essentially like finalize our master plan recommendation, right? So we wanted to make sure that we were able to give you a summary of this work and be able to have some dialogue. We want to fold in some community input outside of that committee and that key communicators group as well. So that's what we're going to do throughout this month. In October, this is where we would start to potentially have board action on this plan if it is the intent of this board to place something on the ballot in March. So in order to do that, and if we're looking at March nineteenth, Election Day, as a target, if that's, if that's where we're heading with this, then we would look to have our first resolution, which would be what's called a resolution of necessity. And that would be essentially stating, we need to do this, we need to make this ask. And so we were targeting the October twelfth meeting potentially for that. The committee meeting will be prior to that, so we would finalize that recommendation. Should we continue to move forward with our process with OFCC? That would be when our agreement with them would happen as well. And here's where the acronyms start flying. So you're in the Expedate Local Partnership Program. So that's when you see ELP, that's, that's the program. And remember, that just means that you're going to use all your own funds upfront and you'd be just continuing to build credit later with them. So that's what that, that's all that word means for practical purposes, I guess, for e- for ease of conversation. So when it says that you would approve that ELP PA, that's project agreement. So that's essentially you making an agreement with the state that you do want to participate with them in constructing this building, should you receive support in March. So those things would happen in that order. You'd, you'd approve the agreement with OFCC and then you'd approve your resolution of necessity. And that would essentially start you on the path to the rest of the approvals that happened to get you, to get you on the ballot. So November, your, November ninth work session, we were thinking you could approve your second resolution. So that's your second action as a board, again, saying that you're, you're going to make this ask. It times up really nicely because November sixteenth is a commission meeting, OFCC. So they would essentially finalize your agreement there within their organization as a commission. And then the rest of the filing deadlines, you see, various filing deadlines are important for different financing means that you would, that you would have to utilize if you were to be successful with this, with this bond issue. And so the first one is the hundred and twenty-day filing deadline. And George, can you remind me, is that the one that we would be targeting for, with your, with your bond council?
Yes, for that, for the November twentieth, the hundred take, the hundred and twenty-day filing deadline, that's for, because of the amount of the ask and with current outstanding debt with the middle school and, and the high school, from the two thousand and thirteen project, we'd be over a certain amount. So we would need to get special consideration with the tax commissioner. So that hundred and twenty-day filing is with the, the tax commissioner. And they would have to look at certain things and give it their approval. And then it would ultimately be filed by the December twentieth day filing with the county to... ultimately be filed by the December 20th day filing with the county to be on the ballot, but we would be doing that in conjunction with the, with the November, the November 20th filing deadline. So that's kind of our target deadline, November 20th to be able to be on the March, March ballot.
So the way that the, like, board or commission approvals work is, you know, you, you start your process in October, OFCC kind of completes that agreement in November and then the Ohio Controlling Board essentially approves everything in the state of Ohio, of which OFCC is one part. So that's the last piece of the puzzle as far as approvals go for your agreement. And then the December 20th deadline would be filing with the Board of Elections and then you would be, you would be done as far as a March 19th ballot initiative. And at that point, the committee, campaign committee, political action committee would be doing the work that they do and, and we would just be educating on any facts on our side as, as a district and as your, and as your consultant. So that would be what would need to happen in order to just hit all of our approvals to, to look at doing this in March. The last page then is some details about OFCC that I wanted to remind everybody about. So you did part, you did participate in this program with the middle school and you already do have some credit building up from that project. And that was done through the expedited, like, local partnership program and that was 7% state co-funding. And so when you move forward with that, you essentially locked in your state share at 7%, which was good because I think you're actually growing in the other direction.
Yeah, or if we would do it, if we didn't have that project from 2013, our state, our state co-funding right now would be 4%.
So...
So we'd gain 3% by doing it, or by locking it in in 2013.
Right. So you would receive, again, 7% on anything that would be co-fundable in this phase, should we continue to work through that. And then the next slide just has some additional information about what that means and what that participation means. So you know that we've been working with the OFCC so far through this planning process as we've been doing this work and we wanted to kind of just forecast ahead a little bit and talk about what that means moving forward if you, you know, were to continue. So you would have to follow the Ohio School Design Manual. So generally, and Chris and I might tag team a little bit here, but we generally consider a lot of what's in that manual to be what would be good standards for construction anyway. Like I already noted that when we did our educational adequacy review of Kinsner, that wasn't done with the OFCC. I think it was right before the OFCC was a thing, actually. But like, those stand, a lot of those standards have just been good standards for a long time and as we were doing the calcs on a lot of those spaces, it's clear that a lot of those standards were being followed in that building already. So a lot of it, we would consider just like good practice. But we wanted to show some examples of things where you would start to maybe become limited by what they're, what they're having in their manual. So we just picked out a few, like, one is that you can't have more than 20% of the exterior of your building be metal panel, like they want to see a masonry veneer typically. That's generally more durable and thought of as, you know, a longer, you know, standing quality material. Little detail things like you're required to put in a classroom sound reinforcement system, which, you know, is something where the teacher or students could, there's microphones within the room and then there's speakers, so it just, it, it helps for all students to hear and it certainly helps for students who have trouble hearing. I'm, I'm trying to think of some things that maybe you wouldn't just assume you would do, but that are required, so some of these types of things. And then there's some guidelines for sizes of spaces and adjacencies of spaces that we have to follow. Probably the biggest thing we would be required to do that you might not necessarily consider would be you are required to participate in what's called LEED, which is Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It's administered by the U.S. Green Building Council and it's been a requirement for all OFCC schools. And it's a system where you get ranked by certified, bronze, silver, and gold. You're required to achieve silver through the OFCC. So that's a system where there's seven areas of concentration, like decisions you're making on your site with your stormwater and how you're developing the site, water efficiency within your building, what type of plumbing fixtures are we specifying and those types of things. Energy and atmosphere is probably the biggest category and that's how efficient is your HVAC system? How good is your building envelope? Do you have the right amount of insulation in your walls that your building's really thermally sound? Those are things we would recommend doing anyway, cause that's gonna make your buildings operate more efficiently and it's gonna save you in operating costs. The types of materials we specify and then indoor environmental quality, so, you know, we are required to meet certain sound ratings for acoustics, we are required to specify different materials with low emitting, you know, VOCs and things like that. And then there's some different credits based on your region that they say are more important, so we follow those too. So this is typically, OFCC would consider it to be about a 3% budget increase to, to do this. That's included in all the OFCC numbers we've been using tonight. So the budgets that we're setting are based on OFCC cost sets, so they're gonna assume that you're gonna do this. But you should just be aware that if you wouldn't be participating, that would be something that we could do or not do, but if we do participate, we have to do this. We also have to discuss a half mil maintenance levy. So with the OFCC, when you complete your entire district-wide master plan, you're required to also have a half mil levy in place because they know that you're gonna need to maintain at a certain point, you know, these newer facilities as well. And you're allowed to defer it and you did defer it at, when you were, when you built the middle school. And I know there was conversation recently about you could, you still have the option to continue to defer that or to add it to the millage and I don't know if you want to add anything there, George?
Yeah, so we have, Abby said, we have, we have a few options. One, this has to be, in order to receive, when, when our num, when we're called for CPAT is when our number's called and when we'd be, we'd be earning credit for this project, we earn credit for the other project. In order to gain that credit, or be awarded that credit from the OFCC at the time our number is called, we would need to have a half mil maintenance levy in place. If not, if, if not a levy at the time or in place of a levy, I should say, the district would need to dedicate the equivalent of what that levy would generate of the half mil and create a special fund and annually transfer those dollars into that half, into that fund, which would be equivalent half, a half a mil. You could transfer from the operating fund, you can transfer it from the PI fund, but it needs to be equivalent for the time that, a half mil equivalent for, based on the assessed valuation at the time you commit to it. And I believe it's for 23 years. So our options are, as Abby stated, 2013, we defer that, we can defer it again until our number is called, or we can implement it with this project at, at the time.
So does that mean that if we, we are already deferring a half mil and now we have another half mil, do we have to do a whole mil or does it just?
No, just do a half mil.
So the other items that are up there are just some detailed items that you could receive credit for should you move forward with doing them under the OFCC. Storm shelter is something that's not required by the code anymore in the state of Ohio. It was briefly, it was briefly required, now it's not. So, you know, generally we're not seeing, not generally, we're not seeing any districts do that to the extent that it was originally discussed in the code. So, you know, it ends up being, you know, well over a million dollars to consider even thinking about doing that in any of your elementary schools. So we probably wouldn't recommend moving forward with that and we would, we would just then not receive co-funding for doing that, cause we're not planning on doing it. The site safety allowance is something that we're, we are recommending at some of your buildings where we're building new and that is in place in case we have to do any improvements outside of our site in the right of way. Like let's say when we improve the Chapman site, a traffic study recommends that we add a turn lane and that's not technically on our property, but we have to do that improvement in the right of way. This would, this would be creditable with the OFCC for doing some of that work. And then the last piece that we haven't had a lot of dialogue on that we're gonna be talking through with the admin team and core team in the coming weeks is it's easy to self-swing on our, I'll be in sight with our Whitney kids staying in Whitney and at Chapman and Sarar, but we want to think through a little bit, what does the phasing for getting that renovation work at Kinsner Dunn look like? Is it an option where we're doing summer work over a series of summers and it's not really impacting? Or is there a situation where we want to talk about potentially relocating for a time and doing a longer stretch of more work there? So we, we're working through some detailed options of what that could look like. But long story short is, we don't think you're gonna need to allocate any dollars for new swing space somewhere else. You know, we think we've got a solution within your facilities. And so these are just some of the details. This is kind of what's left on the plate with OFCC to finalize that agreement. So we're getting really, really close. These are getting down to like the finer grain details. But we just wanted to make you aware of what's kind of out there still with participation with OFCC, because the next time we would come in front of you in October, we would be having that agreement with OFCC in hand that would kind of start to put these things into place once we got into design. So we just wanted to make you aware of where we are with that.
So I think that wraps up the presentation. Are there any questions on the next steps with the ELP process or anything that Abby or Chris has shared tonight that they can answer for you?
There's no questions. I just wanted to compliment Abby and Chris. Brain hiccup. This work started in the summer of 2022 and you just summarized it in 49 slides. And I was there for a lot of the work and the discussion, so a great job. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the Elementary Facilities Committee. I'm proud of the way that we did, we've planned this in Strongsville to, to not just come up with a, a plan and then, and then just deliver it and expect the public to support it. From the beginning, we've had the public in their input all along the way and I think that's the right way to do it and it will go a long way to getting that support from the public, cause the public was part of the design of this plan. I mean, ultimately, the board has to make some decisions to come to the public to ask for the dollars for the plan, but I think the, the plan is solid. We need to flesh out some of the decisions, but going forward, I think this is gonna be great, a great, a great improvement for our district. I'm looking at Ken and he talked about, you know, being one of the more mature members of our elementary committee, but it's nice to see that, that we have a community that even though you don't have kids in the school district, you realize how important the school district is to the community. So I just wanted to take the time to thank everyone for their involvement and this is good work.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Abby. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
So just as they're, they're wrapping up, as a reminder, Tuesday, September 19th, next Tuesday, I'm just looking, I think it's 6:00, 6:00 PM. In my update this week, we sent out the link, I think I saw it in the Strongsville Post, it was put out there as well. So we'd ask all of our community to join us. They'll go through the presentation again, like we use, what we've done for past community conversations. Dan's gonna help out and be the question and answer moderator there, so people can ask, ask the questions live on there and Dan will jump in and ask those as well. Then we'll do the survey to get feedback. That feedback will be used at the October 5th Facilities, Elementary Facilities Planning Committee meeting to make any adjustments to the plan. And then October 12th, we'll be back with the board here. And Abby and Chris, to be clear, not only will it be the master plan recommendation, but that's the time where the board needs to make the decision on if they want this to be an OFCC project and participate in ELP, correct? Okay. So October 12th is a big, a big date. All right. All right, with that, we will move on to Business Services. And Mr. Brechner will come up for his one item for the month.
The item on this section for this evening, good evening, everyone, is a resolution for people transportation agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to enter into an agreement with the N Alliance Transit LLC for the 23-24 school year for the transportation of special education and handicapped students within the Strongsville City School District to in-district schools and also classed at schools out of the district. Transportation in-district schools will also be provided for students becoming homeless while attending Strongsville City Schools and now residing, residing outside the district. This agreement is put in place through the impracticality of transporting these students by Strongsville City Schools bus transportation and the exhibit is attached.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
One thing that I would just want to share, no, you're good, Steve, just share as this specifically addresses homeless students. So there's laws that protect students that have housing instability or are homeless. So the law is wherever the student's child's last place of permanent residence, if they should become homeless, that child will not have to be transient and moved, they will be able to continue their education and stay in the last district of residence. We do have students that are homeless in our school district and therefore if they live outside of the school district by law, we are required to provide them transportation until such time they are able to find permanent housing, whether that's in our district or elsewhere. So this is something that, it's called the McKenney-Vento Act, that was a while ago, but it's the right thing to do by kids and it's also the law. So just a little context as to why we're providing transportation in that nature. We do not have anything under the superintendent's report. We do have one item under Student Services. Be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Applewood Centers, operating an educational institution known as Reserve School for the placement of a student who requires special education related services for the 23-24 school year with tuition in the amount of $298.91 for each school day during the student's placement in the Belfair Residential Treatment Facility. Any questions on that one? All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny for some HR items.
All right, under Human Resources, I have the following items for your consideration. Under one, we have the resignation for administrative staff member. Under two, resignations for non-certificated staff. Three, resignation for certificated athletic supplemental contract. Under four, the appointment of a certificated athletic supplemental contract. Five, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts. Under six, we have educational upgrades for administrative staff. And seven, educational upgrades for certificated staff, certified staff. And finally, under eight, we do have one revision to the May 25th agenda. And that concludes my report.
We don't have any items under Technology and with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings us to item J, Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type dash action consent, which items constitute the Consent Calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests such items be removed from the Consent Calendar and voted upon separately. Do we have any items? Here are none. Brings us down to Board Bylaws and Policies.
Does this need a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I'm getting ahead of myself again. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
But a second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Savcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Savcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Riehl?
Yes.
Ms. Houser?
Yes.
Mr. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now we can go to Board Bylaws and Policies. We have several bylaws. We have several bylaws and policies on second reading, and we are waiving the first reading on another revised policy. Do we have any comments or questions on the bylaws and policies? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Board of Education Other. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education grants approval for Michelle Bissel to attend the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference on November twelfth through the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The cost to register is three hundred fifty dollars per person. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Michelle, for going to the conference. George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Mico?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
And Ms. Bissel?
Abstained.
Motion passes. Second item, be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education grants approval for Sharon Kilbane to attend the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference on November twelfth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The cost to register is three hundred fifty dollars per person. Do I have a motion?
I guess so moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Bissel. Any discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Kilbane, for representing us at the Ohio School Boards Association Conference.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, Heidi.
George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Abstained.
Ms. Mico?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Yes. Motion passes. Last, be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education grants approval for Laura Wolf Housen to attend the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference on November twelfth to the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The cost to register is three hundred fifty dollars per person. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Laura, for representing us.
Oh, shoot, you beat me, too.
George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Mico?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Abstained.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. That brings us to Board of Education miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous?
We do have a football game tomorrow, and it is senior night for the football players, the cheerleaders, and I forget who else. I don't think...
Marching band?
I think band is going to be another night, but show up tomorrow and find out.
I was in Hertz today and explained some beautiful flowers that I saw being prepared. All right, that'll be a good time, the weather should be nice. Next is Executive Session. We do have need for Executive Session to discuss...
To consider the employment and compensation of a public employee, and to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Mico?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
We will enter into Executive Session at approximately eight twenty-five. We do not see a need to continue in public after Executive Session, so I want to wish everybody a good night, and good luck to our football team tomorrow night.